You had cotton cattails in wetlands. Felvedere at the time decided, well, we'll just do twenty acres and we're done with it. Well, we did some research for the DEQ Eagle. And the state trumps any township, county, period, on wetlands, the DEQ Eagle. And if you've got an acre or two acres of wetland, swamp, a bog, drainage, it comes under their jurisdiction. And so what I'm, my question to this board is, do we have the Eagle DEQ topographical map of the wetlands in Cato Township? And I think it's very, it's gonna be a real tool as you're developing your ordinance. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. No fucking push.
That's Cato Township President?
Yes. I can get back up again. My name is Pat Clark, seven, seven, four, by name, in Cato Township. Um, I want the board to inquire because I was told by a member of the township board that the, the farmers or the property owners that do have an signed lease, that they can say yes or no where wind turbine is put on their property. We need to find that out for my own personal situation. My property line is about twenty feet from property that's been leased. So it's very important to me where your ordinance falls in regarding the height of the turbine because my bedroom is right twenty feet from the property line. On another sidebar is that I found out from my insurance company that you have to have broad peril on your homeowners in order to be covered if a wind turbine goes down and hits your property or causes damage. My insurance agent said it did not cost us anymore at that time or didn't believe it would. But I encourage our residents that if this does go through, check your insurance. See if you recall or have coverage for broad peril. That's like a satellite or airplane falling on your house, that sort of thing. But anyway, that's all I have to offer.
Thanks, Pat. Yes.
Jamie Snyder, fourth, three, zero, Sherman Street. I have actually been researching autism and the effects of infrared or infrasound on kids. Anybody with autism. I've worked in healthcare for twenty years. These are the setbacks that we are seeing from, two of them are from Apex. The others are from Grashit County. Anybody with a sensory disorder living next to these is not going to fare well. That being said, so with autism, they suffer from hypersensitivities to sight, sound, smell, taste, touch, balance, and body awareness. So I've read, I'm gonna submit a letter to you guys from somebody who has three children that has autism and they had these things put around their home. Their one child is not doing well. They had had to abandon their home. So that's unfortunate. I'm also going to submit to you a couple of cases in Missouri that is ongoing right now with these turbines being placed too close to homes. There's sound studies, there's studies from other countries. I'll read a couple of them to you. Case report number one is Ireland, an abandoned home. This home has six turbines next to it. They are ranging in distance from zero point eight, I'm sorry, zero point three to zero point eight miles from the dwelling. They have a child that is seven years old. They had epilepsy. Another child that now suffers from postmortem dysgestic disorder. The home has been abandoned. In Germany, they abandoned the home for their children and built a bunker. They have twenty turbines around their home, again, ranging in distance from zero point three to one point two from the dwelling of the home. Next is a case in Denmark that they've abandoned their home and they had a collapsed business. They have four turbines, only four, compared to the rest, in distance from zero point three to zero point seven miles. These are all in this information here. One of the things that I was concerned about or had read about is they have autism, seizure disorder, PTSD clauses that can be put in ordinances. That can permit you to put these things a mile or farther away from homes. I strongly encourage that to do. These kids can't survive in homes like this, as is, as a daily basis, they suffer. So on top of it, you throw in these things and their life is gonna be hap-. Not just for the kids, but for the whole family. So with Moncom County having a very large population of children with autism, I think this is something that we really need to take into consideration and put this clause into our township, just to be safe. So now I'm gonna hand out all this good stuff. I also have something that Brandy emailed to you guys for me. It's four hundred and fifty cases of people who have filed complaints, one of them being Carrie Shindel that are in Michigan. Thank you.
Uh, next from Cato Township?
I am Marcy Myers, Cato Township President. I'd like to start by thanking the township officials that are working diligently with us citizens in creating a wind ordinance that will protect the health, safety, and welfare of this community, also working to preserve the equity and enjoyments of our biggest investments, our homes and lands. But it has come to our attention that some of our township officials have a personal and/or financial interest in this wind project being created here in our county. With that being said, all of our county and township officials need to be accountable for recognizing a conflict of interest and should immediately disclose it. If any of you know or have information that the township official is participating in a wind lease, you must speak up. Any officials or their immediate family that will benefit in any way in the creation of this wind project needs to immediately recuse themselves for participating, debating, and voting on the ordinance. You cannot be neutral if you have any type of outside interest in this project. So as a concerned community member, as well as I believe the majority of everyone sitting here today, we are asking that any township official to disclose to this community who you represent, your involvement with this wind project, whether it be a personal or business interest. The moral conduct of our government bodies failing if it allows any member to participate in the creation of this new ordinance if they have a benefiting interest in the wind project monetarily or otherwise. So respectively, we are asking for all our township officials that have a personal or business involvement with this project to recuse yourself today and all future board business that involves this wind project discussion. This past article in the Daily News is an embarrassment to our county. I cannot believe we have county officials that have already signed up to receive new or future payments for a project that the majority of the citizens are against. This, in my opinion, is corrupt. This is unethical and shameful. Our county and townships are better than this. This needs to be fixed and it needs to start with our officials stepping up and calling out those individuals that are benefiting from big wind. Per the article, certain officials are influencing other members to step up and push out their agenda so their own personal futures or financials secure. This is just so wrong. Thank you.
Here, here.
Thanks, thanks, Marcy. Anybody else from Cato? And I have more Cato residents. Oh?
Oh, come on, guys.
Okay. So we'll run the next section then of anybody township represents a Moncom County. Yes.
My name is Cindy Petrie, P-E-T-R-I-E. I live in Harrison Township in Hollywood. And I don't have a lot of detail to give you tonight and a lot of statistics. I've done a lot of research and we've been through this once before on the other side of the state. We moved here a little over four years ago because of the quality of life here. And we came expecting to stay. We planted asparagus fields and fruit trees and grapevines. And here we are, four years later, a little over four years, and we're taking pictures of our homes with, and we've spent the summer working on it because if these windmills come through, we're gonna be the canary in the coal mine. We'll be the first to go. And we don't want to. But this is not helping for our children, ourselves, our adults, our animals, the wildlife, the birds, the bees. All I have to say is I'm old enough to know when the government tells you it's a, they're here to help, it's usually not the truth. And anything that sounds too good is really not the truth.
Thanks, Mary. Next.
I'll speak up.
Yes.
I'm here, I'm Hackett from Douglas Township. And I'm here because I feel like we're in this together. And I feel that this township really is a window to our county. And what I really wanna say is that I know you've been provided with a lot of information and a lot of data. You have a lot of knowledge. What we cannot provide you is the wisdom to make the right choice. We can't do that. You have to do that for yourselves and for this township. So I'm here to say that I'm a hundred percent backing, supportive of a strong wind ordinance. And as an example, I would say zero channel flicker at non-participating property lines, as an example. And it's just that we have one chance to get this right. We're trusting you to do that and I appreciate the time that you've given us to say that. Thank you.
Thanks, girl. Anyone else?
Kelly Jefferson, Douglas Township. There is a compromise. You guys have all compromised on other issues. And that's what this community and other communities have done is compromise. They've come to a happy medium, a financial gain, to put it where everybody can be reasonably happy. You'll set it far enough, you can set it far enough away from non-participating households. Alls you have to do is work and listen, but also keep an open mind on the amount of money that this could be bringing into the community that we desperately need here. We need the money for more than just the schools and more than just the roads, but the Commission on Aging for the I Am My Kids Center down there, South of Fenway. All this money can be going to help them also that this tantrum could be coming in for. So it's not just locally here, but it's widespread throughout. There's the ISDs and all, and what they entail can help also. But if you just keep an open mind and just keep the pros and the ones that don't wanna participate, you can just keep them in mind and just come to a happy medium. I know that there is a compromise out there. Thank you.
Thanks, girl. Anybody else? Yes.
Mia Briggs.
Anne Briggs?
Pearson Township, Anne Briggs. And I would reiterate what some of the other people are saying. It really is a quality of life issue. And I don't care how far the setback is. You know, if it's our township, it's Cato, it's Douglas, whatever. People are gonna drive through this community and they're gonna see windmill after windmill after windmill. And if you're looking for a home, it's gotta have a negative effect. Even if they're not close enough to our house that we can see them or hear them, it affects the whole community. Your home is your biggest investment you're gonna make in your life. And I can see that these windmills, you know, you look at Grashit County. Who would buy home in Grashit County? Look at these homes. Who would buy that? Nobody would buy it. It becomes virtually unsellable. And they'll tell you it doesn't affect value, but they're talking about taxable value. They're not talking about resale value. And so I have a real concern about the resale value of my home also. We have a vacant lot attached to, next to our house too, seventeen acres. And so when you are doing your wind ordinances, you have to consider from the property line and not from the residence. Because at some point in time, I might wanna sell that seventeen acres and somebody might wanna build on it. And if that windmill is too close, I can't sell that property. So I'm really concerned, no matter where these are in the county, I think it devalues everybody's property in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from Moncom County? Yep.
Matt Hubbard, Cato Township.
Oh, we've already passed Cato Township.
Oh, we're not having public comment?
Oh, we'll come back. Just have a seat. We're, we're, we did Cato Township first and now we're doing the rest of Moncom County. Keep your comments to yourself. Anybody else from Moncom County besides Cato Township? Yes.
Vinnie Tralander, Pine Township.
What's your first name?
Vinnie.
Vinnie Wilder?
True, true.
So this is in relation to what you were just saying about the property value in the whole county, not just this township. Let's just have a hypothetical. There are two houses, identical houses in every single way, except for one has a turbine. If a family is moving in, which one are they going to choose? If turbines come here, well, let's just say they're not coming here yet, but they're coming to other places in the county. Our property automatically goes up in value if we decide to put less turbines because of the premise of scarcity with people, if there's an identical situation, they're gonna choose, if they're sane, to not have the turbine just because there might be potential issues, even if they don't know if they are actually there or not. You would just defer the, the issues that you don't know about and you would just go to the house that doesn't have a turbine. If you put less turbines up, it automatically makes the property value increase in this township if the other nearby townships are putting turbines up.
Thanks, Vinnie. Anybody else from Moncom County besides Cato Township? Yes.
Yeah, Albert Young Award with the, with the project. Wanted to just reiterate the intention that we've said from day one that we are trying to find compromise. We do believe in compromise. I know that these projects can be built responsibly. As it relates to the, to the property values or home transactions, there are, there are real estate transactions taking place as we speak in Isabella County and in Grashit County. And in other parts of the state where turbines exist. Huron County is about to see more turbines come in that are going to be upwards of six hundred feet tall. That's the proposed plan for the newest project that's being discussed and being voted on in Huron County. The communities that have these turbines have not seen the horror story, negative consequences of houses being abandoned. It's quite the, quite the opposite because when these projects are built, there is a benefit to everybody with the overall tax benefits, the school districts, and you name it, it just goes down the line. There are significant benefits for these projects when they're done the right way, which is our intention to work in coordination with, with the township, with the planning commission, with the members of the community, with all the folks who sign leases, who have an absolute right to sign a lease and participate in a project if they choose. That's our intention to continue working in good faith with all parties involved. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Yes. Kevin Murphy, Winfield Township. Mr. Albert says that it's good for monies and things coming in and stuff. And I wish somebody on the committee could tell me why Grashit County has to pay back for what I've been told, three million dollars. Has anybody researched that? Possibly it's a question that you could ask Albert or somebody else that maybe knows a little bit more about it legally. I don't, but I heard about it and I think that's very important. They can say we're gonna get money, it's gonna come in, it's gonna fix the road, school's gonna be good. Down the road, what's gonna happen? Moncom County gonna kick the cash back? I mean, I just think that's something that really needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thanks, girl. Do you wanna respond to that, Albert?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just offer a quick, quick insight. I mean, there is a very clear answer to what's going on. And so far, right now, Mr. Revendo, that hasn't been, it hasn't been determined whether or not any of that, that money's gonna have to be paid back. But in two thousand and eleven and fourteen, the state changed the tax code. And so the state changed the depreciation value for industrial personal property across the board, which includes wind turbines. And so the communities that had turbines leading up to those changes have been, according to the state tax commission, overtaxing the utilities who own those turbines. And so there's a negotiation, from what I understand, taking place today whether or not that back tax is actually owed. But, but the reason that there is some money that's in question as to whether or not money should be paid back is because Grashit County's received over fifty-seven million dollars since two thousand and twelve. Over fifty-seven million. And they've been overtaxing the turbines, actually, according to the state tax commission. So the state, state tax commission today has rules set for utility personal property and industrial personal property tax. All the estimates that we're, that we're basing our, our numbers on, all of our estimates are based on the tax rate that's set by the state today. So if we look at like Isabella County, if you just got the project built, all of those estimates were based on the state's current taxation rate, which was just recently upheld by that, that tax ruling. So my hope is that they don't actually have to pay that back tax. I think they can hopefully negotiate something. But the tax rate is set, it's been set since two thousand and fourteen. So those rules should be set when we build a project, if we build a project. There'll be an understanding of what that taxation rate should be. So unless the townships start overtaxing anybody, I mean, if you overtax anybody, then you have a right to appeal that, which is what happened. So hopefully, they can negotiate some sort of a deal on that, that back tax. But that's where that, that little bit is in question. But this county is, is receiving over fifty-seven million bucks.
Thank you.
Phil, I'd like to interject here because I've sent articles to this commission and the board about that. So, you know, it doesn't have to be Albert who responds to that. There's over eleven hundred cases pending.
Yeah, apparently, obviously, I call it Albert.
That, I just, I just wanna make that clear because he asked, have we researched it? And I have sent you information on that.
Yeah, yeah. It's a common, it's a common.
I think it's good that the rest of the group hears responses to those questions. I personally feel that it's beneficial. None of us here are experts.
Excuse me?
I am a resident.
Excuse me? Is that your time to speak? Okay, sir? So just cut it. So yes, I know we, we've had some communication about that whole piece there, but it is a topic out there, a discussion in the public. And no better to hear from the person.
Thus, I would like to, to discuss that from the research that I've done and you've done, that that's where I'd like to get, get some, some activity on.
But continue with public comments as far as anybody in Moncom County besides Cato Township? Man?
Cato, sorry.
Oh, yes. Don't matter, you don't have to present where you're from. What, what's your name?
Jeremy. I gave you guys a, that article as well. I don't have to say that, but Cato.
Okay, hold on, Jeremy. We, we are in Cato Township.
Cato Township, Jerry, Coifold.
Quiet, Jeremy. We're in Cato Township. We'll come back to that. Anybody else besides Cato Township in Moncom County? Yes.
Linda Reynolds, I'm from Douglas. Something that kinda keeps going at me here. This is supposedly green energy. Where are they made? What are they made out of? How some fossil fuels affected into the making of them? How are they transported here? How are the fossil fuels factored in with that? And constructing them on site? Again, the fossil fuels, the money that's involved through the government that's being paid out. The community will not see the benefits of the electricity that they do produce, when they do produce. A lot of them are sitting and not producing anything. Windy days and they're still sitting stationary. You can go to all these different counties, you've heard all about them, and they aren't working. Why? We don't know why, but it's pretty regular. So is it an actual benefit for this county, township, all of us? Electric bills go up to help offset these costs. The only ones that's benefiting in your area are those that have signed leases. And that's all just the money that's gonna be the benefit. I've yet to hear one of them say, I'm going to donate to the schools, to the hospitals, to the roads, to the community, to the fire department, on and on and on. We're going to donate seventy-five percent of our income from the turbines back into the community. So really, how are you benefiting? The money that you do get, you better sit on it because you may be paying it back. That's all I have.
Thanks, girl. Anybody else? Yes.
I'm Kathy from Newson Township. I just have a question because Albert just said it twice, that it would be considered industrial personal property. Does that mean that the leaseholder, excuse me, the leaseholders will be taxed at an industrial tax rate? Or they still get, gonna get their ag tax rate? I just don't know if that's gonna change their property taxes. Because if it's considered industrial personal property, it seems they should be taxed on an industrial tax, not an ag. It's no longer farm, it's no industrial.
Now? Anybody else?
Yes, it's Albert's.
Go on, then.
It's Dave's egg.
Yeah, Penny Bassett, Maple Valley Township.
Bassett?
Yes.
Thanks.
As far as, I don't know what Linda was saying about the not staying here. I have personally spoke to engineers from two of our three electric companies in Moncom County. And the electricity that generates off them will not benefit Moncom County. With the possible exception of maybe two times a year, once in the summer, when your air conditioners are running nonstop. And if we over exceed the energy that we have from our companies here, they may pull some from DTE. Or in the winter, if your furnaces are running, if we get the below zero temperatures that happen here. Those are the only two times that any of the electricity coming from the turbines that they wanna put in Moncom County will benefit Moncom County. They all go to a grid for DTE and there is nobody in Moncom County that has DTE for electricity. You may have it for gas, but you do not have it for electricity. So it's not gonna benefit us as far as our electric goes either. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in Moncom County? Okay, so that will go out to Moncom County. Anybody here from throughout the state, I guess, if you're, yeah, yes?
Yes, my name's Charles Curtis. I live in El Gomen Township, Kent County. And I have some property interests in Cato Township. So I'm interested in preserving the values and the character and the quality of life in Cato Township. I would gladly live up here at this point. You put windmills up here, that would be the last place I would wanna move to. I just like, I like to understand the demographics of people here. How many, raise your hand. How many people are against?
It's not a survey, this is just your comments.
I would like to have some disclosure on how many people here.
These are comments you give to us as a commission. You have every right to make, that's your.
This is my comment time. I would like to understand, know how many people are against windmill? Never mind all the setbacks and this and that and the other thing. How many here are against windmills in this county? So now how many people favor windmills? Industrializing our, this county, this township with windmills? How many are in favor of that? So, well, I would like to ask the board if that doesn't bring up some questions in your mind about why people are not here to support windmills. Now, I have a vested interest in this township because I own property here. I have a vested interest, but I don't have a conflict of interest. I have a vested interest because I'm interested in preserving my property values, preserving the quality of life, preserving the wildlife, preserving the beauty, preserving the aesthetics, preserving the traditions of Cato Township. And if you put windmills up here, you will erode every one of those aspects of this county. You will denigrate the economics, you will denigrate the aesthetics, you will denigrate the social aspect. It tears communities apart to put these things in. As this, as someone said, As this, as, uh, someone said, with, with, uh, ADD and hyperactivity, these things affect your health. You will be changing the dynamics of this county forever. And Albert, and I think this meeting was out of order, do you own property in Moncom County and pay taxes in Moncom County?
Of course he doesn't.
So, so why was he allowed to talk? This was a public forum. That's questions to the board. That was out of order. You try to put us, me, out of order, that was totally out of order. And I believe that people are not here that support windmills because they have conflicts of interest as, as opposed to just vested, vested interest. And they don't wanna expose those conflicts. And what Ms. Myers over here said was absolutely correct. If anybody that's making decisions on this has a conflict of interest, they better darn well, uh, recuse themselves from the decision.
Thanks, Cheryl. My people is giving other people's time. Anybody else from, uh, Moncom County? Outside of Moncom County?
I'm from Moncom County.
No, outside of Moncom County? Throughout the rest of the state besides Moncom County?
Mr. Shears.
No, okay. Let's go backwards a little bit then, cause I don't think everybody heard how I set the meeting up this time, if you will, so. We're gonna go back to, I think there's about four people that if I remember right, needed to ask to speak, if you will, so. Let's go over here. Yes?
Matt Hubbard, Cato Township. Um, about two months ago, Apex Senior Manager sat here when the Wilkys were here and said they seriously had a problem and he was genuinely trying to help. Um, he went to a different township, handed them a packet, inside that packet was a letter calling the Wilkys liars and saying all kinds of terrible things about the Wilky. I'm not sure if we really wanna do business with a person or company that acts that way. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Ma'am?
My name is Denise Jaglowski, I'm from Reynolds Township, I'm a retired sleep disorders and EEG tech and I really appreciate that, um, someone brought up the subject of autism and seizure disorders in children. Um, I did EEGs where you, part of that test is you expose the patient, um, to flashing lights and you start at three hertz, that means three flashes per second and, and then it increases gradually. And what you're trying to elicit is seizure activity in the brain. I might look at you and not know that you're having a seizure, but when I'm monitoring the brainwaves, I could clearly see, uh, seizure.